Okay, so I would take it at this point in time that we have people who joined the meeting?
Yes, we have participants at the meeting right now, Council President. So we can do the call to order now, right now, since it's 6:04. And then you do the normal thing of moving into executive session. The council members can leave the meeting at that point and accept the meeting invite that the mayor will be sending all of you.
Okay, all right, very good. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the City of East Providence. Today is Tuesday, May 5th, 2020. May we have a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Council President. Councilman Kahoon.
I'm here.
Councilman Marado.
Yeah.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Here.
Councilwoman Souza. Yes, yes, Council.
There.
Okay, hello. And Council President Britto.
Here, thank you. Maybe at this point in time, would anyone like to make a motion to move into executive session?
So move, Mr. President. I'll second.
And we have a second roll call vote.
So we're going to move into executive session pursuant to round general laws. Forty-two, forty-six, five, eight, two, to discuss claims and pending litigation as noted on the docket.
Thank you, Mr. Solicitor. So we have a motion on the floor, second it, to go into executive session. Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Kahoon.
Hi.
Councilman Marado.
Hi.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Hi.
Councilwoman Souza.
Hi.
And Council President Britto.
Hi. With that being said, we'll go into executive session, and we should reconvene at 6:30 for an open meeting.
Mr. President, for the benefit of the public, we are now going into executive session. The public can remain on this, hopefully will remain on this. We'll be back at 6:30 by entering, and if they get logged off for whatever reason, they can enter the following number back into the meeting ID, which is nine-nine-three-oh-seven-nine-six-oh-three-two-four, with the passcode being five-three-nine-two-nine, to be a member of the Zoom, or to call one-eight-seven-seven-eight-five-three-five-two-four-seven at 6:30.
Thank you, Mr. Solicitor. See you over into executive session.
All right, thank you.
We all set with the public as well?
The public is here. We have collective, we do have a collection of people who will be speaking during public comment this meeting. I don't have anybody, I have four people right now. There's going to be the public hearing section that'll be available, but for public comment, I have four people, so, yes.
All right, very good. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to kick off the meeting right now. Thank you, and welcome everyone to the City of East Providence City Council Meeting. Today is Tuesday, May 5th, 2020. I want to ask that we all stand at this point in time. We have a special guest who is going to be performing our National Anthem, Paul Morris, and her name is Lily. Lily, 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 what's her last name? Help me out here.
Bollorino, Lily Bollorino.
You know, she's a sophomore at the East Providence High School, and she's going to be playing the National Anthem. So may we all rise at this point in time, and I'll give you, and I'll show you where they are. Can you see her? Can everybody see her?
Yes.
Yes, Council President.
All right. You're being recorded, Lily. All right, all right, thank you, Lily, thank you.
Good job, Lily.
Everyone say, "Good job."
Thank you.
Thank you, Lily.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
President, before we move to the first item, may I move to seal the minutes from executive session?
All right, yes, you may. We have a motion on the floor to seal the minutes from executive session. Is that, would anyone like to second that?
Second.
We have a second on the floor. Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Kahoon.
Hi.
Councilman Marado.
Hi.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Hi.
Councilwoman Souza.
Hi.
And Council President Britto.
Hi, thank you. Next item, please.
Next item, Council President, is a consent calendar.
Move. Would like to make a motion to accept the, or approve the consent calendar?
Motion approved, sir.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Councilman Kahoon.
Hi.
Councilman Marado.
Hi.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Hi.
Councilwoman Souza.
Hi.
And Council President Britto.
Hi, thank you.
Council, Council President, this is the city solicitor, Michael Marcello. Just as a word of instruction to the rest of the council, remember, some people may be listening on the phone, not necessarily see hearing on Zoom or, so please, when you speak, please announce your name first, and then make the motion, so everyone knows who's making the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Solicitor. Next item, please.
The next item is public comment.
And here will be the first person on public comment.
The person, the first person on public comment is Kevin Braga.
Hi, Kevin. I'm going to just ask you that, just keep in mind that there is a three-minute limit on public comment, so if you can keep it within the three minutes, if it goes, if it goes a little longer, that's perfectly fine, however, but if it tends to go longer, we're going to just have to cut you off and anybody else who's still in the public room at this evening. So, Mr. Braga, you available? Do you have your phone on mute?
No. Muted.
Oh, there he is.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Council President. I'm here today to voice my, I'm a little upset at what I see here on the council calendar for today's meeting, on some of these resolutions for a change to the charter. This isn't what the residents of this city voted for when we voted for the mayor form of government, and it's mind-boggling to me that we have council members that forget that. So by Councilman Marado putting these things on the agenda to be discussed is not what the residents of this city voted for, and if there's other ways that he would have liked to have the city run, then he shouldn't have ran for council, or he should just run to be the mayor somewhere in the future. These attempts, to me, are to undermine what the residents of this city voted for, and that there's no time and place for this now, considering that we're in a pandemic, and we need everybody to, you know, pitch in, do what they're supposed to do, so we get through these tough times, not to be doing these petty little, you know, council charter changes that right now do not need to be looked at, but they do in the future need to also be looked at through a charter commission. So there's really no reason for Mr. Marado to be putting things like this on the, on the, on any of these meetings, upcoming meetings. So I am very upset at this, and then I worked hard to help bring what we have here. When I, when I am a member of the East Providence Democratic Committee, and I did help to work on getting this mayor form of government put in, and I take it as an insult as a resident that there's people that are willing to participate in the council, but are no, don't like the way they are halfway in the game. That's not how things work. Things work is when you don't like something, you change it. So if Mr. Marado doesn't like the way the city is running, then he should just run for mayor somewhere in the future and make those changes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Braga. Next person, please.
Thank you, Mr. Braga. The next person on public comment is William Fazioli. It is a read-in, if you would like me to read that, Council President.
Please do.
Okay, this was sent today at 3:20, and it says, "Good afternoon, Samantha. I am providing a public comment for tonight's city council meeting by email, since I am unable to attend the meeting due to a religious holiday. As a member of the city's most recent charter review commission, I want to express my thoughts on the resolutions regarding proposed charter amendments. I strongly believe that any proposed changes to the city's charter must be carried out in a thoughtful and measured manner that also provides for ample opportunity for public input. During the last city charter review, I recall that we would meet on a regular basis for several months. Each meeting was very well attended, and this allowed for a well-rounded discussion on a variety of topics. All of our meetings were duly advertised and were open to the public. In addition, minutes of our meetings were also kept file, so that the public could follow our discussions and actions. As we concluded our work, we transmitted our recommendations to the city council, which in turn held public meetings on the proposed charter amendments. I would urge the city council to pursue a similar path if it intends to amend the city charter. This will allow for a thorough review of the entire charter, while also affording the public an opportunity to provide input into any proposed amendments. We certainly live in unprecedented times, but I do firmly contend that a transparent process that includes genuine civic engagement will produce the most favorable outcome. Respectfully, Bill Fazioli, East Providence."
Thank you, Madam Clerk. May we have the next one, please?
The next one is another read-in, if you would like me to read that, Council President.
And who was that from?
This is from Chrissy Rossi.
Chrissy Rossi, okay. Can you just spell, spell the names, please?
Sure, it's C-H-R, Chrissy is C-H-R-I-S-S-Y, Rossi, R-O-S-S-I.
And I just, I just said that for the public, that's why, and I should have did the same thing for William Fazioli, so.
Sure, that's okay.
Well, please.
This was sent on May 5th at 5:19 PM, and it says, "I write this evening in support of the charter amendments. An elected mayor must share responsibilities with our elected council representatives. They should all be mature enough to work together and for the common good of our city. Any mayor going forward should not have carte blanche to load all of the city's boards and commissions with only those who supported them. It's undemocratic, unfair, and unnecessary. Veto powers over ordinances defeat the purpose of having an elected judiciary body to act on behalf of the citizenry. I have maintained since day one that the council should always have their own legal representation. No lawyer can serve both masters. If the solicitor is appointed by one body, they are faithful to the body who gave them their job. Each branch should have their own legal representation. In closing, without checks and balances, we have a dictatorship. The citizens of East Providence didn't sign up for that. Thank you for making, thank you for taking the time to review my comments, Chrissy Rossi."
Well, thank you, Madam Clerk, for reading that. So that leaves us down, if I'm not mistaken, one more person for public comment?
That is, I believe so. I see the mayor has his hand raised. He just.
Who's the, who's the public comment on there first? Who's the person who has the public comment?
The next public comment is Dr. Alan DiIello, Jr.
Is he, is he on?
Yes, I can go ahead and I'll put him in.
Okay, if you could just put him in, sir.
Of course. Dr. DiIello, you are unmuted and able to speak whenever you are ready.
Doctor, before you begin, can you just state your name and spell your name for the record, please?
Certainly. Dr. Alan, A-L-A-N, Diello, D apostrophe, A-I-E-L-L-O.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, thank you, Council President. Um, I wanted to speak tonight on the current proposals to alter the city charter. I do not believe that they are in the best interests of a balance of power arrangement in the city. One of the biggest problems that we've had in the past is the lack of checks and balances within the city government, and the power previously had been vested totally within the city council. With the system that was laid out by the Charter Commission, we now have a form of checks and balances which allows the council to act as a legislative branch, and the mayor to act as an executive branch executing the will of the council. Now, I don't mean to give a civics lesson to politicians, but the whole point of this was to try to eliminate some of the gridlock that had plagued the city for the past 10 to 15 years before this council, and it would be a major step backwards if we moved away from the mayor being able to act as a check on the council. I also have strong reservations about altering the makeup of the city boards. For the record, I am a member of the planning board, and I was appointed by this mayor. However, I believe that the mayor needs to have the ability to pick people that are going to execute his vision, as well as there needs to be some form of balance where the council has some say as well. So I believe that the makeup needs to be thought of in this regards as being balanced, rather than transferring power back to the council. Finally, I do have some reservations about this happening at this time. Right now, we are in an emergency. We are both a federal and state state of emergency. To propose something like this at this time, it leaves a lot of people very disenfranchised. I do not, in the least, believe that that is Councilman Marado's intention, and I don't want to imply that, but I think it's the wrong time, also midway through our first term under this new system, to go forward and change it. We need to see how this plays out with proper checks and balances before we go and change that. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. With that being said, I take it, is there any more public comment at this point in time, Madam Clerk?
There is. The mayor would like to speak if that is okay with you, Council President.
Sure, go ahead.
I'll bring him on. Oh, he's good. Okay, Mayor, you're, you're good, you're on. Mayor?
Muted.
Oh.
Can you hear me now, Samantha?
Yes, I can hear you just fine.
All right, thank you. Hey, so I wanted to weigh in on this, and I have to agree with some of the comments that were mentioned by some of the speakers before me, especially Dr. Iello and Mr. Braga and Mr. Fazioli. The greatest concern with this whole situation is that, I'm not saying we don't need to make changes in our charter. We don't need to fine-tune some areas that were forgotten about when we changed to this form of government. I certainly agree that this can always be made to be a better document, but it is, it is our guiding and our governing document. This is like the same thing as the state constitution to the State of Rhode Island and the US Constitution to the federal government. So you've got a city charter that was changed to change the form of government with a lot of input, a lot of meetings, a lot of public comment, a lot of experts testifying on a lot of these issues, and then it was brought to the council, and the council once again had the opportunity to weigh in and, and take information from the people involved with this whole process. And then they put it to the people, for the people to vote on, and, and to decide whether or not they, they wanted to make those changes. My great, great grave concern that I have is, the first, the very first I heard of any of these charter changes was when I saw the docket posted this past weekend. So I was shocked, as I'm sure most people who are dealing with this crisis that we're dealing with right now are probably not really paying attention, they probably don't even know what's going on. For us to be discussing or possibly voting on charter changes without having a good process in place, it's, it's kind of scary, and it's not good for good government. I'm going to read to you just real briefly something.
Because we're, you're on two minutes of three minutes, so if you could just, if you're going to read something.
And that's, and that's exactly, that's exactly right, Mr. President. I will read it quickly, but this is exactly what I'm talking about. We're talking about items that will severely impact the governance of our city, and even I, as the mayor, don't have adequate time to speak on what I want to speak on. But I did forward to all of you a letter going through all these different issues. Part of the, part of the argument, people say there's no checks and balances. There are checks and balances, because in every action that I take, especially in these changes that want to be made, I need to get council approval. There's, there's absolutely a check and balance. So, real quick, while it's important that a charter be reviewed and revised when necessary, it's also vitally important that the process of doing so is open, transparent, and codified in the charter to protect against politically and personally motivated changes. I urge this council to consider adding language to our city charter that would establish a process of periodic charter review by a commission made up of members who are both elected by the people and others who are appointed by the council and the city mayor. This commission would propose charter changes that would then be presented to the city council, a process similar to what happened in 2017. Amending a charter is a major responsibility that should be done through a defined process that involves hearings, expert testimony, public input, adequate time to ensure proper vetting of proposed changes. As elected officials, it is our duty to ensure that we have a charter in place that offers long-term stability and protection from politically motivated charter changes that can have unintended consequences and cause long-term harm to our city. In 2016, 70.
Mayor, if I can just interrupt a little bit, because we're, we're just way beyond the three minutes, and I got to allot you the three minutes, just like I have to do with everybody else. You know, unfortunately, I, I mean, if this is, is this, you reading verbatim what you had sent earlier?
But the people haven't heard these, the people haven't heard this, Councilman, so I think it's important for the people.
And I hear you, and I understand what you're saying, however, public comment is three minutes. I always allow people, I give and take a few minutes here and there. But to read that full letter, it's, that a letter alone is going to take over five minutes to read in addition to the three minutes that you had given. So I just have to be fair to everyone, as I am with you as well, going forward with this. And I hear what you're saying, what you want to do, and what you want to read, but I think at this point in time, we need a three-minute, three minutes for the public, and to make an exception for 10 minutes, I just think it's a little bit too, too much at this point in time, and I don't mean to.
I can respect that, I can respect that, Councilman. I, I respect that, Mr. President, and I'll tell you what, I'll post it on my Facebook page, which I already have, and people can go and check it out. It, maybe on the mayor communication, I can further expound, I'm not sure how that even works.
Well, it's not posted. It's not on there for, for mayor communication, but I mean, that, that is something on the communication you could talk about, yes.
And I, and I, and I'm going to leave, Mr. President, but I'll tell you exactly why. So had I known about this before it got posted and locked in, and it got posted to the public, I would have been able to put this on for mayor communication, but it was too late, because this got posted, I didn't have an opportunity to put this on for mayor communication, so it's, it's not a good process, and I know you, you're about good government, so I hope that the right thing happens in this whole process.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We appreciate your time. With that being said, Madam Clerk, does that wrap up our public comment?
Yes, Council President, it does.
Council President, you just might want, again, because this is kind of a quasi-meeting, if anybody who's an attendee would like to make additional comment and raise their hand, there are lots of people.
So at this point in time, public comment is closed. We're going to proceed with the meeting, so we can move forth. Madam Clerk, public comment is closed. Next item, please.
Council President, I apologize. It looks like there's somebody who would like to speak. I don't know how we want to do that, if they weren't signed up beforehand, but they, I, I do see that a hand is up. It's Paul Mora.
I'll tell you, I'll tell you what I'll do, and because the mayor wasn't signed up as well, so I'll allow this one person in, and I'm giving them three minutes if they are, and that's, we can't go beyond the three minutes. Other than that, I mean, we're just going to cut off and move on. We got a meeting to run here. Just, just keep in mind, people, when I said public comment, you got to sign up beforehand. This has been the rules all along before, and we're just not coming up with these rules. So I'm going to allow this, because I did allow one, but, but let's go with one more, and we'll go with three minutes. We'll cut off after three minutes, and then we'll proceed with the mayoral appointment after that.
Very well, thank you, Council President. We have, the next person is Mr. Paul Mora.
Paul Mora, Mr. Mora, how are you? Are you with us, Mr. Mora? Or is your phone on mute?
Got it, go ahead. Sorry.
Can you hear me now? I, I can't, you got three minutes.
I don't need, I don't need, first of all, I need three minutes, Mr. President.
Well, great.
I just, yeah, I mean, I'll keep it real simple, because all the points I think I wanted to make have been made, but I would just like to say, to keep it real short, I think these proposed amendments should be tabled for this evening. I think enough case has been made that both the council and the administration has to have further communication over these issues. I find these, these proposals untimely, unnecessary. I'd love to know the rationale of why these changes were put forward at this point, when even someone with as much experience as I in government and with Zoom meetings, because I've been doing quite a few of them, has trouble getting in or has trouble following the process. So imagine, it's just the general public that hasn't had to deal with this yet. So for that and all the other reasons that were so eloquently stated previously, I would move that you guys just table this stuff and do what you should be doing, and have the kind of conversations you need to have at this point. I will tell you this, to somebody who sits on the waterfront commission and deals with developers every day, and deals with potential investment in this city, they are very happy that you have a mayor or form of government here. And I, I want you to know that. They're very happy that there's a point person, there's an administration to deal with, along with the city council, and you have the kind of checks and balances you have right now. So I wouldn't mess with that too much, everybody, and just proceed forward, and I'm done, Mr. President. I'm sorry, and I know I went about two minutes, probably.
That's okay, thank you, sir, appreciate your time.
Thank you, thank you for your time, bye.
Okay, thank you. That concludes public comment at this time. We're going to move over to the next item, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Council President. The next item is mayoral appointment, no council approval needed. This is Florentino Braga, reappointment to the Housing Authority. The term would be March 11th, 2020, to March 12th, 2023, a three-year term.
Thank you. Again, no council approval at this, for that mayoral appointment. Next item, please.
The next item is under council communications. The first item is request capital improvement budget for June. Council President Britto.
I'm going to be quick with this. I'm going to just follow up to what I have said during the capital improvement and budget process that we went through last summer, and I'm going to ask and request from the administration that if we can by next month have the wish list or the things that are necessary or needed in the city for the capital improvement budget, and I say that only because going into the budget this summer, as opposed to the council, two weeks straight, five, six, or a night, work until midnight, or we're in that point, I'm thinking that if we can kind of get ahead of the curve by at least having an idea of what the capital improvement looks like, excuse me, a capital improvement budget looks like, we could proceed smoothly throughout the summer and focus on the budget and the budget, the budget only. So that's all I would have to say at this point. So that's all I would have to say at this point in time. It's just a request essentially that if we can get a peek at or snapshot of what the capital budget is going to look like come June. Thank you, Quirk. Madam Quirk?
Thank you, Council President. The next item is back to work, citywide COVID-19 plan. Council President Britto.
And I didn't put this on for discussion. I just put it on there essentially to just, you know, inquire and to make sure that transitioning department, excuse me, city employees transitioning, working remotely and working in the office that there is a plan going forward, not only with the city employees, but also say for an example, the the senior transition, senior back into the senior center and to see whether or not the city has some type of plan. And from what I understand and my comments with the mayor on this as well is that they're following the CDC guidelines and rules and regulations with the state as well. The city does have a plan for transitioning the workforce back into, back to work and has a plan with the senior center as well. So I don't need any other further discussion on this. That concludes this portion of my communication. Next item, please.
The next item, Council President, is current financial state for the city of East Providence. Councilmember Otto.
So I put this on the docket. It's not not for a discussion unless all the council members would like to discuss. But I would like to start thinking about and having discussions on or updated on what our current financial projection will be for the city. As with many citizens that myself and I have, I've had a lot of questions asked from residents. It's where, where, where will we be in the near future? You know, we, we all know that we're going to be losing a lot of tax revenue, especially from the food and beverage sector of the city tax base. And, you know, I'd just like to know where we are moving, how we're moving forward. Do we have a a plan in place? And just an update as to what's going on, what's projected as we're moving into near budget season. That's all.
Councilman. That looks like concludes council communications. Madam Quirk, next item, please.
Yes, Council President. The next item is continued business. And the first item is show cause dispositions and agreements. The ones that are listed are Town Wine and Spirits, 179 Newport Avenue, Davenport's Restaurant, 1925 Patekett Avenue, Riverside Liquors, 225 Bullocks Point Avenue, and Greg's Restaurant, 1940 Patekett Avenue.
Mr. Solicitor, would you like to take the lead on this, please?
Thank you, Council President. These, as you know, these businesses were the subject of a East Providence operation where they were cited for serving minors under 21. There was a sufficient backup on the charges. We gave them an opportunity to admit the charges and pay that minimum $250, $250 fine, which is by city ordinance. All these establishments have admitted to the violation and paid the fine. And I'm just asking the 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 city council as the licensing authority to formally accept those dispositions.
Mr. Solicitor, can we, do we have to vote on them individually or can we group them as one?
I would group them as one to the interest of time and since they're all the same disposition, Council President.
Would anyone, or anyone on the panel would like to make a motion to accept the solicitor's report?
So moved, Mr. President.
We have, we have a motion by Councilman Murato, seconded by.
Councilwoman Souza.
Councilwoman Souza, okay.
Correction, that that motion was from me, Mr. President.
Well, I'm sorry. I apologize.
No problem.
Motion made by Councilman Cahoon, seconded by Councilwoman Souza. Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon. Councilman Murato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodriks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
And Council President Britto.
Aye. Thank you. That includes the continual business of show cause disposition and moves right along to new business. Madam Quirk?
New business, item A is ratification of executive order 2020-22, extension for the state of municipal emergency from May 5th to May 19th, 2020.
Would anyone like to make a motion to accept the ratification of the executive order? Or more importantly, does anyone have any questions or discussion on this prior to a vote?
So I, Mr. President, if I may, is this, we know that the governor has ordered phase one of reopening the state starting May 8th. Does that mean the city will not be in conform with the state? We will be prolonging it for an additional week? Is that what this order is suggesting?
Can you address that?
Yes, no, no, that's, no, that is not the case. The the state of executive order at the state remains in effect. And she's, she's modified previous executive orders based upon the establishment of a state of emergency, but the state of emergency remains in full force and effect, much like the city municipal, state of municipal emergency remains in full force and effect. Under the prior council, it expired under May, under May 5th. This just extended it to May 19th. And again, as I indicated, it can be, it can be stopped by the council at any time, but the state is still under executive order of state of emergency and so is the city.
Council Vice, or Council President Britto, Policy Director Fertado was wondering if he could add to the conversation.
Is this open for public comment? Who's this? I'm sorry, Policy Director?
Mark Fertado. I think he was just wanting to respond to the executive order questions.
Oh, oh, sure.
Mr. President, I just wanted to add that the only reason for the extension, it's, it doesn't mean that we'd fall out of step with the governor. It's just that without extending it, all the municipal executive orders that have been signed would, in a sense, disappear. So everything would go back. The whole state of municipal disaster emergency would end.
Okay, understood. So where are we in terms of providing our businesses with some relief for outdoor dining? You know, limiting maybe how many patrons come into their restaurant? If it's 10 or 15, as the governor had mentioned, where are we on a municipality level where we're making those, allow our businesses to start to reopen?
So far as I know, that's something that's, we're kind of just following the state's lead on that. But I can get back to you if, with the latest updates, but I I believe right now that's we're just taking points from D V R.
Council President, it looks like the mayor has an answer to some of these questions. Can I chime him in?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, Mayor, you're on.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so what we plan on doing for the members of the council is we we're going to follow the guidelines set by the state. So my, my, my urge is to get us up and running as soon and as quickly as possible. And so we're going to follow whatever guidelines are set by the Rhode Island Department of Health and the governor. The governor has asked that the municipalities, even though municipalities can do more or they can, they can follow their own path, the governor has asked that we all try to do the same thing that she's doing so that we remain uniform across the state. So yes, we are definitely looking at trying to follow the phases that she's putting in place.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilwoman Souza, any follow-up or any other questions from the council?
So I guess my question that still really hasn't been answered, I've had multiple businesses reach out wanting to know when they can start introducing either outdoor dining or allowing a certain number of patrons into their establishment.
So the governor, the governor has been briefing the the public with her different phases, phase one, phase two, phase three. And the the implementation of phase one is dependent on certain numbers continuing to go down, which I think that seems to be the the direction it's going in now. But as soon as she gives us the 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 green light, then we'll go. She has not given that as a green light yet. She's been talking about it, but it's not yet done.
Okay, thank you.
Any other further questions from the council?
President, I I would just add that I I think in terms of restaurants and businesses that cities could not usurp a decision by the governor, I think cities and towns will have to make decisions about certain parks and maybe a playground or something. But if the governor has ordered restaurants and businesses to to not open fully and she's under phase one now, I don't know, Mr. Solicitor, if you could answer this, but I, I don't think we could do anything differently, could we, in terms of restaurants?
Mr. President, if I can just answer that, I I would not feel comfortable going against, if the governor and the CDC and the Department of Health were advising against opening, opening restaurants and allowing outside dining, if they were advising against that, I I would not, I would not have any expertise to rely on to make a decision contrary to what the governor was making. So I would have to follow the recommendations of the governor and the Department of Health and everything else. But so, so and every guy, you're right, Councilman, I wouldn't go against the governor on that if if she said.
And I, you know, don't misinterpret this. I want to see businesses open as much as anyone and it's just been a painful process. But we've come so far as a small state to basically doing things together. And I think we got to go a little bit further and until the governor gets us through these phases, we don't have much choice.
And just for the record, I'm not, my questions are not geared towards saying I want to open the restaurants and and have, I'm asking questions just based on what my constituents and businesses are asking me. And I do not watch the governor's briefing every day because I'm not in a position to, as you guys know, I'm, you know, working. So I'm not listening to her broadcasts on a daily basis. So I don't get updated on a day-to-day basis of what she's talking about specifically. So it's more of an inquiry just to let the public know and that I've asked the question and that I'm informed myself. So thank you for the response.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any, any other further conversation from the council at this time?
Council, Council President, if I could ask the mayor one question, if he's still there. Yes, sir, go ahead. Mr. Mayor, to follow up on Councilwoman Souza's question, the, the action tonight is to approve the extension from 5 May through 19 May. Do you anticipate an additional request on 19 May to further extend that? Or do you think that this is going to be sort of in that executive order? I, I, I believe that I will be before you again, asking for a further extension. I didn't want to ask for a much longer extension because I, I, I want to give the council the ability to weigh in on it, you know, at every council meeting. But from what the governor is saying, so the, the governor anticipates fully that this state of emergency is going to go much longer and she's going to open up government and and business to these several different phases that she's laid out. Several different phases and each phase is a 14-day waiting period between each phase. And and that 14-day wait waiting period is just to determine if the numbers are lower and coming lower. The reason why we need to continue to have a municipal state of emergency is that it allows the, the government, our, our municipal government, to still continue to, to put out executive orders that mirror what the state is doing, but also it allows us to do what we're doing with our alternative work arrangements in city government. Mr. President did mention, and I had a good conversation with him the other day regarding what we're doing as a municipality to protect our employees and how we're doing that. That's all because we have this, this state of emergency that allows us to do all of that. So certainly, if I may follow up, the extending it now and if we are requested to and decide to extend it later on the 19th or whatever that, that, that is, that we meet again, certainly that doesn't preclude you from making changes in any of the other executive orders, right? If they can be loosened up, if you will, or changed, right? That's correct. That's correct. Okay. I'm all set, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other further questions from any councilmen?
The president not hearing any other questions, I would move approval of the extension to May 19th.
Okay, that being said, we have a motion on the floor by Councilman Rodriks to approve ratification of executive order 2020-022. Would anyone like to second that motion?
Second.
We have a second on that motion from Councilwoman Souza. Madam Quirk, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Council President. Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilmember Murato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodriks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
And Council President Britto.
Aye, thank you. Next item, please.
Next item under new business is petition for zone change. And it says refer to planning board for review and recommendation according to East Providence City Ordinance 19-73. The applicant is Marshall Development LLC. The property address is 500 Veterans Memorial Parkway, also known as MetaComic Golf Club. The plat and lot is on the assessor's map, 107 Block 15, Lot 001. Current zoning O-1 open space. Proposed zoning Waterfront District, New MetaComic Sub-District. See proposed use table to amend section 19-481. This is introduced by Council Vice President Rodriks.
Would you like to take the lead on this?
Sure, just, just a brief statement for clarity. I, I attached my name to this mostly because I know all of us and a lot of us in the community want to keep a close eye on the MetaComic development. And I wanted to make sure that we get this through the proper channels. It appears to me that this is a standard procedure that it has to go to the planning board first and then move on up through the procedural ladder, planning, zoning, other departments. But we have to send it there. So without making any comments on the merits involved here, I, I simply want to start the procedure off on the right way, in the right process, so that it goes to the planning board, which it has to anyway. I'm not sure exactly why we, we have to vote to do that if it's a standard procedure, but it did, did come to us. And so our charge tonight is not to make any comments about merit either way, although I guess my colleagues are free to say whatever they want to say. But the basic point here tonight is to just send this to the planning board and then we sit back and wait for their recommendations, zoning board recommendations and public input and any other public hearings that are made. So I'll, I'll hold off on a motion while I'm waiting to see about all the comments. But that's pretty standard procedure to this tonight, just to kick it to the planning board.
Thank you, Councilman Rodriks, for that description. It's open for discussion at the council. Does anyone have any questions, concerns?
I have a question.
To address at this point in time. Councilman Murato, please go ahead.
Council Vice President, do you know at what point the Waterfront Commission will weigh in on this or is that, is that part of the process at some point?
Yeah, good question, Councilman. I, I understand it definitely part of the process. I did have a brief conversation with Chairman Fazioli to make sure that they're involved. And I, I neglected to say that that's an important piece here because by, by the MetaComic group going to the planning board and then the other city agencies, we, we will have a hand in what happens here and what is developed there. And the Waterfront Commission has a lot more authority than just a standard request going to the planning board. So the short answer is yes, the Waterfront Commission will be involved before it comes back to us. And they have a lot of restrictions and a lot more say legally on, on the proposals. So planning, Waterfront Commission, zoning, public hearings, public input, all would be involved before anything could happen.
I have a question. Since it's going before the, if we putting it on the waterfront potentially on the waterfront district, would that mean that the council would have limited say, as it did when it came to Kettle Point issue where between the Waterfront Commission and the developers of Kettle Point deciding to forego low-income housing and take the 10% in lieu of housing? Would that, and we hadn't, as a council, had no jurisdiction over that? That would then put this area in the same scenario, whatever decisions were made between the Waterfront Commission and the developers of this property, the council would not be able to supersede. the council would not be able to supersede what the Waterfront Commission?
I, I don't think that they were seeking, uh, low income. I think it was more affordable housing.
Affordable housing, I apologize, wrong, wrong terminology.
Before, before I comment, I think I see Attorney Marcel's hand up, so I defer it to you, sir.
So I think it's important to recognize that the only thing that's important tonight is their proposal, uh, which will change the zone from O one open space. And they're proposing that it goes to the waterfront district and, uh, uh, put under the waterfront district and under a new, which is called the new MetaComic sub-district. That's their proposal. It will now, that proposal will now go to the planning board. They will decide, the planning board will make a recommendation as to whether or not they believe that putting this parcel into the waterfront district is appropriate or not. And you're correct, the waterfront district does have a lot more flexibility in the development proposals for developers and whatnot than the normal districts. But, um, so the, the answer, the, the answer is yes, but the council will ultimately decide what, 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 if it goes into the waterfront district, if it doesn't, if it stays out of the normal zone. So you will get to decide that. The only thing that you're doing right now is asking the planning board for their recommendation. Now, the planning board will conduct hearings and have, have, uh, public hearings on this, as well as once it gets back to the, gets back to the council, you too can have, uh, additional hearings as to, uh, what, what they recommend and what they do. And then ultimately you will pass or not pass an ordinance determining where this is going to be put. But this is, just so you understand, it's the developer's proposal to put it in the waterfront district. It will now go to the planning board, the planning board will weigh in whether it should, or should not be there. They will come back with a recommendation. You can accept that recommendation, reject it, modify it, whatever, uh, and then you'll, and then you'll have the final say. But there's a long pro, public process that's going to be played out between now and then. Just so you know, the ordinance does require that the, once a petition is filed, that the council make a decision within sixty-five days. That can be waived by the applicant. And if, I'm hoping that if we need more time, given the unique circumstances which we're under, with, you know, limited public hearings and whatnot, that they would hopefully agree to waive that sixty-five day requirement. But we'll get, we're not there yet. That's kind of where we are at the, at the moment. So all the questions that you raised, councilperson, are all legitimate. Um, and you can, you'll have opportunity to testify before the planning board as members of the public. But more importantly, you'll have an opportunity to weigh in whether it gets put in the waterfront district when it gets back to you, uh, if, if the planning board still recommends.
Thank you, Mr. Solicitor, for that, uh, well, um, descriptive of still what the applicant is seeking at this point in time. Any further questions from the council?
Council President, it looked like the mayor's hand was up. I don't know if he wanted to, um, provide additional information or not. Would you like me to filter him in? Okay, be just one moment. Mayor, if you can hear me, I'm coming for you. Let's see, hold on just a sec. Okay, Mayor, you're good to go.
Sorry, I, I raised my hand and I heard the response from Solicitor Marcelo, and he was right on point, and I apologize. So I, I can't, I couldn't tell you the disregard, but I just.
Okay.
Right, with that being said, uh, appears that there's no more discussion from the council. Uh, Mr. Rodrick, so would you like to form that into a motion? Or I didn't hear a motion, please.
Sure, uh, Mr. President, I, I would move that the developer's request be forwarded to the, submitted to the Providence Planning Board for further action.
So we have a motion on the floor by Councilman Rodrick for the proposed zoning waterfront district to a, uh, new MetaCon sub-district. Would anyone like to second that motion?
I'll second.
We have a second on the motion by Councilman Kahoon. Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Kahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
And Council President Britto.
Aye, thank you. Next item, please.
The next item is resolutions to amend the East Providence Home Rule Charter subject to voter approval at the November twenty twenty election. The first resolution presented is a resolution proposing an amendment to the city charter regarding the appointment of the city solicitor and the assistant city solicitor sponsored by Councilman Morado. And just really quick, Mike, um, Mr. Solicitor, do you want the explanation of resolution read or no?
No, it's on the agenda.
Okay, just making sure.
First, first of all, I'd like to start off by saying, um, these resolutions were put on the docket not to be deceptive, not to sneak something in during a pandemic. As you know, we, it's our desire to move government forward. We have items on the docket that we have taken vote tonight and will be taking vote tonight. That not, they're not of essential, but yet we're still, you know, performing those functions as a council. I want to add that this, these docket item discussions have been discussed at length throughout all these council meetings, numerous council meetings. This is not a surprise. We, we tried to do a workshop, which by, uh, you know, some error of, uh, advertising, we couldn't go into the workshop. We've talked about this at length. We've been talking about charter change for a long time. The reason why I put this on the docket now, it's that after this meeting, we have five meetings left, okay? Now, if the council's desire is to put any charter change, uh, you know, resolutions for a public vote, it needs to begin by August fifth, that's the deadline, okay? The, to say that this was, you know, first time seen was when the docket came out, that is inaccurate because there is a docket review that takes place during the week. Everybody knows that, okay? Uh, if, if, you know, the administration wanted to put forward that letter, which by the way, I didn't receive personally, I received from another councilperson, as with pretty much every other communication. Hey, that should have been put, that could have easily been put into communication, okay, prior to this meeting, all right? The, what I want to start off with, uh, first of all, uh, before I get into, uh, why I'm putting forward these resolutions, uh, Mr. Council President, what I would like to do, first of all, is I would like to, uh, remove the number two item, the veto power resolution. I would like to withdraw that.
So before we proceed on to resolution number, uh, proposed to amend the city charter removing the mayor's veto power ordinance, although you'd like to have it removed, let's, let's just stay on the first one. And then when we proceed on to the next, uh, resolution, we can just, um, you can have your request at that point in time. Have it removed.
Sure, thank you. So these docket items, I put it on for a vote, yeah? I'm still open for discussion. I'm still open to have a discussion, put it on for a further date for a vote. I'm open to it. It's just that I'm asking that, you know, it's done before the deadline if we decide to move forward with this. To have a charter change is not unheard of, okay? As mentioned, as like the Constitution, United States state constitution and a charter change, it's a living document. It's open for, for changes. The Charter Commission that we at one point discussed and possibly implementing, it wasn't the desire of the council to have, to reconvene the Charter Commission, if the council remembers that. We went down that avenue. We had that debate, we had that discussion. It's just the council elected that we ourselves could put a docket, an item for a vote in this next, uh, election, if, if I stand corrected. And that's all on record. It's not unheard of that municipalities continue to put docket, uh, charter changes during elections to tweak or fix certain problems that they encounter. Although the Charter Commission did do a good job, they still left some things on the table, things that we're discovering now that could be fixed, okay? We spent almost a whole year discussing the, uh, you know, uh, department heads attending meetings. Could they attend? Could they not attend? We spent a whole year debating that, okay? That was a major flaw, right? A major flaw in the charter, okay? Because how can we, how can we consciously go forward with resolutions that pertain, pertain to, like, say, DPW when we can't even get the, the expert, you know, testimony of the DPW director? But that problem has been resolved, which brings me to the first item on the docket, the first resolution for a city solicitor, okay? And I'm going to go on record as I have before, and I asked repeatedly, can we fix this department head issue by, uh, ordinance? And the answer I repeatedly received was no, okay? And it wasn't until I found the proper, you know, uh, charter amendments that allowed us, and through the assistant, assistant solicitor, allowed us to pass an ordinance, which resolved that problem. As was mentioned before by one of the speakers, that's, that is, that stands corrected. Now, you can't serve two masters, okay? We've already done half of the work by reallocating funds for our own attorney onto the council budget, okay? I'm not asking to hire a new solicitor to have a third solicitor. I'm asking for one, at least one of those two to be a council appointment. That's what I'm asking for. I'm open to ideas, I'm open, I'm open to suggestions, I'm open to even tabling this, uh, first resolution, if that's what the council's desire is. But I wanted to start, to start, continue this dialogue that's been started a, a, a long time ago.
Thank you, Councilman. So before I add my two cents, uh, I'm going to open the floor up, uh, for discussion. Would anyone like to, uh, chime in on this, uh, good, bad, indifferent, however?
Aye.
What their thoughts are as far as this resolution is concerned?
May I, Mr. President?
Please, please, Mr. Kahoon.
I, I think, uh, Mr. Morado and I have shared, um, similar opinions with regard to, um, the legal council situation not being perfect. I think we've, uh, and I'm not talking about any particular, uh, I'm not talking about Solicitor Marcelo, Assistant Solicitor Conley, uh, I'm talking about the situation whereby, um, we have one person representing both the mayor and the council. I think we've run into a number of situations where we found that to be at least sticky and contemplated situations where it could be difficult, if not impossible, to, uh, to implement. I, I am for the idea of the city council having its own appointed legal counsel, spelled differently. I, my issue when we came out of the charter, the last discussion, I think, when we had on the, the charter amendments, was I believe the last or second to last meeting we had before COVID nineteen stuff struck. And, uh, we had all kind of taken a note to go back and take a look at the charter and, and, and kind of itemize those, those pieces where we thought it needed some help or some work. You know, in the course of me doing that, you know, I came to the conclusion, well, you know, I'd take a look at this, pull on this string, this connects to something else, let me see where that leads to. And lo and behold, it became very, became very difficult for me to isolate specific changes that, um, I, I thought could be made with a good government in mind that didn't, you know, have unintended consequences. The more I've thought about it, uh, the more I think that having a body, um, you know, the mayor's idea was interesting. I'd certainly be willing to discuss that or other ideas. But having a body whereby, um, you have appointed officials, you have elected officials to represent the, the electorate directly, actually looking at the charter holistically versus looking at individual pieces, which is what we tend to do when we run into something that causes us issues, as we did with the budget timing. And, and to, and to, and to do that, you know, reasonably, thoughtfully, uh, and deliberately, so that ultimately what we come up with is an improvement in that product versus trying to do it piecemeal. That's kind of where I stand. Uh, I, I do think we need our own legal counsel. I'm not sure that this is the, uh, right way to do that, so, uh, that's my two cents.
Thank you, Councilman Kahoon. I think we all feel that way as with respect to having, uh, our own, uh, legal representation. Would anyone else like to chime in, uh, at this point in time?
Sure, I will, I defer to you, Councilwoman.
Sorry about that, uh, Council Vice President.
No problem.
So I, I think I've, I've said this a few times, um, and I'm pretty, um, consistent with, uh, both Councilmen, um, Morado and Kahoon, where I think the council needs their own legal counsel and we should be able to, um, either appoint or hire, um, based on what our needs are legislative or if there is some conflict that, um, we don't see eye to eye on with, um, potentially one of the solicitors or the administration. I think the way it's set up now doesn't lend for, um, good representation, though it's not the mal-intent of any of our solicitors in the office to do so. But, you know, they have their, um, hierarchy that they report to. And we've seen where within the law office, there's been confliction between the solicitors and their opinions. Um, and that's to be expected because each person interprets things differently. But the council needs someone, um, that is going to represent them and have their best interests and their voice be heard. So that is what I am looking for in whatever resolution that gets drafted for the council. Those would be my, what I'd be looking for, for approval.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Rodrick?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I too think that, you know, we need to look further at the delineation of, of legal services. Uh, I'd, I'd like to do it. I think we've talked in the past about being able to do that through the budget process. Whereas we have the authority as a council to allocate funds and, and hire a person or whoever we want to look at it. I, I would hope, uh, Councilman Morado, that you consider tabling a lot of this. I, I think that, you know, we've been working together as good as a group in, in order to keep that going. I, I'm not sure tonight's the night or in the middle of everything else that's going on without having a lot of public input. We had talked in the beginning about having public hearings, listening to a lot of people. Maybe the Charter Commission, what I had said in the past was I did not want the former Charter Commission to be reassembled. But I think they had their shot and they did a, basically a good job. I think they left some holes for us. But that maybe a new group of citizens could look over the charter and we could come up with, uh, some ideas. But to do this just now without maybe four or five people can zoom in, it's still a new process, doesn't really give me a nice feeling of public input. And I think we have some time to, to work on this. Um, I'm glad that you're going to remove the veto thing because I think there again, without a lot of public input, my, my, I, I would have said there that we have the override right, so that there is a check and balance. And let's see what the public thinks about that. So, uh, while some of your ideas have, have some merit, you know, I, I think that, uh, there's a different way of handling it and just putting this through a charter change question to the voters without a lot of public input is, is something I would not support at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Rodrick. And, and just to add to the conversation, um, I'd like to just go back to last term, uh, having the discussion when the Charter Commission was, um, brought up initially, which I was against early on. I saw that they did a very good job and I commended them at the very end. It turned out to be a lot, uh, different than what we had anticipated and what I had expected from them. However, during that time, and if I'm not mistaken, uh, former Councilman Jim Bryden had announced that, whether it was privately or publicly, that he had discussion and talked about perhaps, once the Charter Commission was formed, that maybe every five years or whatever amount of years it may be, that that sitting council at that point in time formed another charter, uh, commission to review the existing, uh, charter that's, uh, on hand at that point in time. But I'm almost sure it was former Councilman, uh, uh, Jim Bryden who had, um, made that comment. Again, whether it was public or private. The way I feel about this is, I mean, we all think the same in the sense that does a council need a separate, uh, uh, legal representation? Yes, that, that's the obvious, that's the given. So however we go about doing it, whether we do what we did during the last vote, we create, uh, account, seventy-five thousand dollars we put aside for legal representation and we get our own legal representation, or we go forward and introduce that the council has the right to select. And I wouldn't even go as far as saying a, a city solicitor. I always believed that the city solicitor should be at the. I always believed that the city solicitor should be at the hands of being selected by the mayor. But if that's the route we're going to go, then I would think and I would propose the assistant city solicitor would be selected or be appointed by the council. But again, I just, you know, keep in mind that we have money aside if we choose that we do want an attorney at this point in time to represent the council, we have money for that. Whether we're happy or not, one of the two that we have excluded, but this for the sake of having someone else. But I think personally that, you know, at some point in time, that that's the case, that we're going to have to have, the council will have to have its own legal representation. How we go about doing that, that's a whole discussion that we can have further on.
So if I can just add again, if I can just, we, so we had those discussions, right? We moved the money, we moved some money into our council budget to hire some legal representation if we need it. And if everyone remembers correctly, what happened with that? Well, we had the administration come up the podium and advise us not to do that. So that was another roadblock, right? It's not good for the city. They may have a different opinion, you know, with our elected appointed city solicitors and so on. So we moved away from that. I do like the idea, I'm just saying, one of those two appointments should be a council appointment. What I would like to do through the chair, Clerk Burnett, we do have a council meeting on July 7th, right? Madam Clerk?
Yes, Councilman.
So we have a meeting on July 7th, correct?
That's correct.
And we also have one on August 4th?
That's correct.
Can I move this resolution item for discussion, further discussion for July 7th? And my hope is that we will be back open to regular council meetings and then after that discussion, if the council desires to put it to a vote on August 4th, which is the absolute, you know, deadline, it's the day prior to the deadline, then, yeah, we'll deal with that. But I would like to move this first item, this item number one, to July 7th meeting for further discussion.
So Madam Clerk, if you could just put this on the docket for the July 7th meeting. I know it's well in advance, I don't know how you do that going forward, but somehow if you could, I'm sure the Councilman will remind you of it as well.
Council President, that's a motion to table to July 7th. That's the appropriate motion to make.
Correct. I'm making a motion to table, item number one to July 7th.
Okay, so Councilman Murato does have a motion on the floor at this point in time to take item number one, which is a resolution proposing to amend the city charter regarding the appointment of the city solicitor and assistant city solicitor. Motion stands to move this discussion to the July 7th meeting. Would someone like to second that motion?
Second.
We have a second by Councilwoman Souza. Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call vote on this, please?
Yes, Council President. Councilman Kahoon?
Aye.
Councilman Murato?
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick?
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza?
Aye.
And Council President Britto?
Aye. Thank you, Councilman. Moving right along to the next resolution. Resolution proposing an amendment to the city charter removing the mayor's veto power over ordinance. And Councilman, you want to just make a motion on that, please?
As I mentioned, I would like to make a motion to withdraw that resolution.
So currently, Councilman Murato is making a has a motion on the floor to remove the resolution proposing amendment to the city charter removing the mayor's veto power over ordinances. Would anyone like to second that motion?
Council President?
Yes, sir.
Since the Councilman is the sponsor of the resolution, he doesn't need to get a council approval. If he's withdrawing, he's just withdrawing.
So although we have a proposed resolution on the docket for vote and he removes it, we don't need to go on?
It's his right to withdraw it at any time before there's a motion.
So with that being said, let the record state that the Councilman is removing resolution proposing to remove the mayor's veto power over the ordinance and there is no vote necessary. That brings us down to the next item, Madam Clerk.
The next item, Council President, is a resolution proposing an amendment to the city charter regarding appointments to the Planning Board, Zoning Board, and all other city boards and commissions, sponsored by Councilman Murato.
So the reason why, again, this has been a topic of discussion and I think each and every council person has had an appointment to a board, one board or another, just to find out that we don't have the authority anymore to do that. You know, I appreciate the public comment tonight and, but to say that a changing of the charter of giving council members some ability, not all, but some ability to make certain appointments, especially those that affect their wards, like for example, for me would be the Carousel Commission Committee, and not being able to appoint something for my ward to represent that or have the ability to, I don't think that's fair. If you add up all the board members and commissions, I think they total to about three hundred members, okay? You know, and if you look at all of the speakers tonight, and no disrespect to the speakers, but four out of five, if I'm not mistaken, are CDC members, okay? Before I ran for office, I was, when I decided, I thought about joining a board. I was told by a CDC member that you can't do that because you're not a, you know, Democratic Committee member. I don't know if that still stands true today, but, you know, if you look at it, it pretty much looks that way, right? All I'm saying with this change is that we need to have a process where we too can have a pick onto these boards and commissions, especially these boards and commissions that are important. Zoning, planning, you know, the Personnel Board. Okay, if the council remembers, not too long ago, there was a resolution to change the makeup of the Personnel Board to give the administration the ability to certify hiring lists. We had letters that were sent after the fact by members that were appointed. They were two minutes on the job and they already had an opinion as to, you know, whether or not, you know, it was a good idea to have the list certified by the administration. If we want to talk about checks and balances, that's part of being checks and balances. We need to pick people that are not affiliated or have no connection to any party or be holding to anyone. Okay, so that's not taking away power from a mayor from a government. I don't care what anybody says, okay? That's just a way for us to have a voice in some of these picks, okay? Again, with this ordinance, I also would like to move this to the July 7th. What's the, my council members, my fellow council members would like to weigh in on it? If not, I will make a motion to move it for discussion for the July 7th meeting.
Unless other council members have anything that we would like to discuss at this point in time, the Councilman has a motion on the floor to move this resolution proposing the amendment to the city charter regarding appointments to the Planning Board, Zoning Board, and all other city boards and commissions to the July 7th meeting. Again, have any comment? Would anyone like to second that motion?
Mr. President, I'll second it with the comment that, you know, I would like to see this deferred also. I would also be looking for more public input. And more specifically, I noticed that some of it talks about appointments by the four wards and I don't know where that leaves the council at large position. I think that in representing the entire city, I would certainly like to see the council at large position, you know, have a say. And furthermore, you know, look into this a little further. And again, tonight, there's no real pulpit here for a lot of public discussion or public input. So I like the idea of putting this off. It may be a lot for July 7th. We might have to just see that the rest of that agenda does not have a lot of information other than these things. And if we're going to have public hearings, and we don't know where this pandemic is taking us. We hope to be a lot better then. We hope it doesn't take a turn. So this is all subject to change in my mind in terms of how far we can go with this. But bottom line is I'll second that.
So without any further comments from the council, we have a motion on the floor from Councilman Murato, seconded by Councilman Rodrick. Madam Clerk, may we have a vote on this, please?
Yes, Council President. Councilman Kahoon?
Aye.
Councilman Murato?
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick?
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza?
Aye, and I just want to mention that I, we've had multiple conversations on this and my opinion remains steadfast that I think, as Councilman Murato said, we do need checks and balances in the city and I believe boards and commissions also falls under that. I don't think one person should have control over all the boards and commissions because then that lends to a biased party in favor of who appoints them. I think it's good to be diverse and though the mayor has opened to the council suggestions of appointees, I know council members have made multiple suggestions of appointees for boards and commissions and he is not taking those into consideration for appointments. So again, I think everybody involved, including the councilmen at large or councilwoman at large, I think all, in my opinion, all boards and commissions should be written by ordinance and in the ordinance, it should specify that one or more can be appointed by all of the member elected officials in the city and not limited to one.
And I don't need to speak out of school. I know we're in the middle of a vote. I don't, I just, I want to say that's not been my experience. I've recommended two members of the public to the mayor, neither of whom is a CDC member, certainly to my knowledge. And one was appointed to the Waterfront District Commission, one was appointed to the Economic Development Commission. I haven't done a whole lot with regard to appointments, but personally, from my take, you know, I haven't had that experience. I'm sorry if other members are having that experience, but I have not.
So just as a correction, Councilman Kahoon, the Waterfront Commission isn't, the council has that appointment that doesn't need the mayor to appoint for us. We do that independently. It's the only board that we can. But in regards to your other one, maybe there's favoritism across who gets appointed and who doesn't. But I just want to move it forward. I say aye.
Sure. I wouldn't think I'd be favored, but sure.
Thank you, Councilwoman Souza. And Council President Britto?
Aye. And again, I just want to make it clear that this is just to move it to the July 7th meeting. Thank you. Next item, please.
The next item, Council President, is the introduction of ordinances in the first and final passage with public hearing. An ordinance in Amendment of Chapter 19 of the Revised Ordances of the City of East Providence, Rhode Island, 1998, as amended in title zoning, sponsored by Councilman Murato and Council Vice President Rodrick.
Take the lead on this ordinance?
Sure, I'll do it. So for quite a while now, I've heard numerous complaints from neighbors that live on the terrace in Riverside and in the Saving Point area in regards to Airbnbs. As of right now, the city does not have an ordinance which regulates the Airbnb rentals, which they're essentially short-term rentals. There's no one to hold accountable for the unruliness per se of the renters, you know, whether it be for a week, two weeks. With this ordinance, what it will do is give the city a method for accountability to go after the landlord if they're not complying with, you know, the short-term rental ordinance. This resolution, I'm sorry, this ordinance was drafted by Assistant Solicitor Dillon. It was implemented with his help in Providence. When I looked at that, it looked like to be a really good ordinance. It was vetted through the zoning department. They made a few, a couple of recommendations, which I agree. And I'll just hear from the rest of the council members if they have any input.
So at this point in time, the Councilman would just like to open up the floor for discussion for whether you have any comments or suggestions.
I would just add that Councilman Murato and I were contacted on about the same day by Riverside residents and I subsequently heard from others throughout the city. I was surprised to hear that, which Providence had a lot of people taking advantage of the Airbnb opportunity. And I think it was a new thing to Rhode Island and of course, East Providence as well. And that just, there were no regulations and there were problems with parking and a lot of issues. So I won't repeat what Councilman Murato said. I think he framed it well. And I agree with all of that. I also think that currently, under the COVID-19 policies of the governor, I've heard mention of Airbnb procedures have been kind of frozen where you just can't have people come in from out of state. Probably a separate issue, but I think it's very harmless and very timely that we have something on the books. It still involves a little bit of an honesty policy because who's to say if I open up my house to an Airbnb and I advertise and, you know, I don't tell anybody. You're supposed to come in the city hall and register, but if you don't, you don't. It's like people burning in their backyard, you know, until someone complains, you're not going to know about it. So we're going to have to rely on the honesty of the public, but let's at least get something on the books about it. Thank you.
Any other comments from the council prior that, before I open it up for public, this is a public hearing?
Solicitor has a comment.
I just want to make sure when you're probably making the motion to pass that you're selecting which ordinance, the one that was recommended by the Planning Board or the original one. So the original ordinance was amended by the Planning Board recommendation, basically changing the enforcement officer from the Planning Department to the zoning officer. So if that's the one that you passed, we need to make that clear.
I make a motion that it's the ordinance that is recommended by the Planning Board. I'm sorry, by the zoning board.
No, no, Planning Board.
So before-
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yes, the Planning Board, taking the Planning Board as the authority to, you know, fine or check on these properties and putting it into the-
Jurisdiction.
Putting the jurisdiction for enforcement and the fees from the planning department to the zoning officer?
Yes, correct.
As recommended by the Planning Board.
Yes.
So before we-
That's the ordinance, sorry, Council President.
Solicitor, before we vote, this is a public hearing?
Correct.
So, and I don't know if we have anyone from the public, Madam Clerk, that would like to weigh in on this conversation?
At the time, for Council President, so if there's members of the public who are listening either by phone or by Zoom, this is the appropriate time to either raise their hand by Zoom or to call in to let us know that they have a public comment. And give them a minute or two.
For those that are watching also on Zoom, if you are wanting to participate in the public comment part of this, you just go to Participants, raise your hand, and then we can call on you.
So, Mr. Solicitor, with that being said, just to give the public the opportunity, who may be listening, who's like probably dialing and if fat fingers like myself might hit a two instead of a three or one instead of a two, can we just move on to the next ordinance just to give them time and then go back to this ordinance? I think that will give them sufficient time to, you know, gather their thoughts and be able to dial in. Would that be appropriate?
That's fine, yeah.
Would the rest of the council agree with that?
I think it's a good idea, Council President.
Yeah, fine.
Okay.
And the clerk is monitoring the calls, I assume, because I don't have that access right now.
Madam Clerk, if we can just proceed, we're still on the introduction of auditors and we're under number one. A, we just semi-completed without the vote, but we want to proceed on to letter B. And letter B is the ordinance of the city, excuse me, the ordinance of the council of the City of East Providence appropriating $150,000 for the support of security system for the city clerk and treasurer's office. appropriating $150,000 for the support of security system for the city clerk and treasurer's office, sponsored by Councilman Kahoon and Councilman Murato. Either one of you would like to take the lead on that and just-
Yeah, I'm happy to. Is somebody speaking? I'm sorry, I didn't-
No, no, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, what I want to say is, yeah, my name is on this, and I support this ordinance. I had nothing to do with writing this ordinance, and I think it's fantastic work. When I finally got a chance to review it and read it, I like the fact that it tabulates to date everything that we've got in terms of allocations for the capital expenditures and budget. It's very clear, I think, for all the voting members to see what the what the addition is here, the addition of the $150,000 to increase the security situation, you know, or improve the security situation in the clerk's office. I think, you know, we talked about this a little bit at budget time last year. I think having an opportunity to sort of see, you know, how the the things operated in the time of a global pandemic, I hate to keep using that term, but it's the appropriate term, and seeing the need for additional secure space. That is the space that really is kind of the central nervous system of the city, if you will. Every bit of business that we do, every bit of legislation that we pass is documented there, titles, deeds, you name it. I mean, if that's, you want to find out something about some piece of property or person in East Providence, that's where you go. So that's certainly something that needs to be protected. So, you know, that's just, that's my take on this whole ordinance. That's why I support it fully. Mr. Murato, turn it over to you.
Well, you know, so we saw that docket docket item where I would like to see a financial, where we are financially moving forward with this pandemic as far as the city, right? We we know we're going to have a lot of lost revenues in different categories, especially the food and beverage, for example, which I think accumulates, I think we collect like 1.9 million just in that and so on. And to say, and I don't want the public to think, oh, hey, go where in the middle of this, and people are struggling, and they're voting to spend another 150,000. Well, prior to this pandemic, we had these discussions. That office, as Councilman Kahoon stated well, holds a lot of vital records. But more so now with this pandemic, we need to protect our workers. I would actually like to see the same security system throughout that whole first floor where there's public access. I can tell you that in Bristol, which I'm very familiar with, historic building, they put up partitions, just just this last week, permanent, you know, stud and sheet rock with windows and pass-through drawers and stuff. That's where everyone's moving, not only your security feature, but in future, you know, outbreaks or whatever, at least they have that protection. So I don't think it's going to cost 150, but it's there. And for those reasons, that's why I sponsor this ordinance. I'm sorry. Yes, this ordinance.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other further questions from the council or comments? If not, I would, I mean, I think it's a great idea. And just to expand upon what Councilman Murato was talking about, I would like to see it also throughout city hall for the most part, dependent upon the type of security system that we're looking at, looking for. I like to see some type of splash guard like they use in banks as the councilmen refer to, especially now with this pandemic that we have, and, you know, with viruses and bacteria and germs. I mean, our frontline workers, these are our frontline workers who is dealing with the public on a regular basis. Maybe we need to incorporate something for them, that separation between them and the people who come in and face them or who encounter them at the desk. So whether it's security or some type of splash guard that goes across to separate the two, I'm all in favor of. But how do we go in that direction? What exactly do we look at? What do we look for? Do we look for a splash guard that goes on the top of every counter? How high do we go up? To me, it's just something that I think that we should incorporate into this as well and have in addition to the security systems in those two departments.
Mr. President?
Please.
If I could just add, I agree with you, and right now, I'm concerned about Councilwoman Souza's cat, who might need some security over there. It's a big cat.
I can't get him to leave me alone. I'm so sorry.
It's okay. At least it's not, it's not one of Councilman Kahoon's dogs. You know, they're big. But seriously, in supporting this, maybe along the way, I'd like to ask Solicitor Marcello and Clerk Burnett, if maybe you could inquire, and obviously, I'm not saying tonight, but if you could inquire through Captain Potvin or someone, I know the city has received some funds regarding the current crisis, and it's to help with expenses the city is going through regarding the pandemic and in terms of making a secure workspace. I mean, maybe there's a few dollars we could use for city hall, but if not, we need to go ahead anyway. But yes, Mike.
Council Vice President, I think it's a very good point. The mayor has has daily conferences at the end of every day with his directors, and we do intend, if the council approves this, to try to seek reimbursement through FEMA as a capital upgrade related to the COVID virus. No guarantee that we'll get the get reimbursement, but we've been told that it's worth a shot to put it in for our, as part of our FEMA reimbursement from the city for costs associated with COVID.
But can hurt. I say let's move ahead.
Thank you. Council President, remember, this is a public hearing as well. You're muted.
I apologize. Madam Clerk, is there anyone from the public who's wishing to speak for or against this ordinance?
Uh huh, sorry. No, there is nobody.
Okay.
Oh, excuse me. Hold on just a moment. Hold on. We have somebody who just raised their hand. I believe it's the mayor. Hold on just a moment. Mayor, we will go ahead, and you are in.
I just wanted to thank the council for bringing this forth, Councilman Kahoon and Murato. I think this is something that if there's enough funds in the process, we will certainly look to do other first-floor, public-facing buildings, offices. If we can put the same type of barriers we're looking to get for clerk's office and for collections. So absolutely, we'll try to do that. And Solicitor Marcello was correct that we are going to look to see if we can get some type reimbursement as part of a COVID-19 response.
Okay. So with that being said, just again, to do what I did with the last ordinance at the pleasure of the council, if we can just jump back to, I know it's a lot of jumping back and forth, but I want to give people the opportunity and time to respond to this. If not, you want to vote on it right now. We can vote on it right now. If you want to go back to the first passage, however you'd like to proceed with that, let me know.
I make a motion, go through the first, the previous ordinance, and then give, that way we'll give time for anyone trying to call in.
All right, and then we'll go right back to, so we'll go right back to first passage, public hearing. This is an ordinance amendment of Chapter 19, Revised Ordinances of the City of East Providence, Rhode Island, 1998, as amended in title zoning sponsored by Councilman Murato and Council Vice President Rodrick. So did, or do we have a motion on the floor for approval of this ordinance? And this is for Airbnb. I take it that nobody has responded with public comment, Madam Clerk?
Nobody.
All right, so let's proceed with a vote then. Would anyone like to form this into a motion for a vote?
Make a motion to approve the recommendation version by the planning board.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Souza. The version of the planning board, we're going to go in that direction for Airbnb. Do we have a second on that motion?
Second.
We have a second by Councilman Murato. Madam Clerk, roll call, vote, please.
Yes, Council President. Councilman Kahoon.
Aye. Sorry, I'm sorry. Before you take the roll call, Mr. President, can you just clear that the public comment portion is now closed on this ordinance?
Thank you for bringing that to my attention. Public comment is now closed. We are moving and proceeding first and final passage for the public here for Airbnb rentals. We have a motion currently on the floor by Councilwoman Souza, seconded by Councilman Murato. Roll call, vote, please.
Okay, we have Councilman Kahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Murato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Council President Rodrick?
He's muted.
No, it's not muted, but I'll try again. Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
And Council President Brito.
Aye. Proceeding on the next ordinance that was read off for the ordinance for the council of the City of East Providence appropriating 150,000 dollars to support the security system for the city clerk and treasurer. Considering that we did have a discussion on this, any public comments for this, Madam Clerk?
I don't speak.
Would anyone, if not, would anyone like to make a motion?
So approve.
Second.
Who made that motion?
Councilwoman Souza.
Councilwoman Souza, we have a motion on the floor, but Councilwoman Souza, seconded by who again?
I think Councilman Murato seconded that.
It's Council.
Public comment is now closed at this point in time. Madam Clerk, may we proceed with a vote?
Yes. Councilman Kahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Murato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
And Council President Brito.
Aye, thank you. Next ordinance, please.
Thank you. Next is ordinances for second and final passage with public hearing. The first is an ordinance in Amendment of Chapter 8 of the Revised Ordinances of the City of East Providence, Rhode Island, 1998, as amended in title licenses and business regulations. This is sponsored by Councilman Murato and Councilwoman Souza.
Council President, before you proceed, I did send you an email early today. This is the, this is for first passage only at this point. This was not, this was not the second passage, this is first passage. This is initial introduction.
First passage, public hearing.
No, just first passage, no public hearing, sorry.
No public hearing. Okay.
So this ordinance is up before the council as some additional guidelines and specific language in regards to licenses or permits taken out within the city. We have come across in the past year, noticed that certain businesses potentially were operating without a license, or maybe have had multiple violations that warranted a show cause hearing or investigation at least. So this is an ordinance that gives some direction to our city solicitor's office to be able to bring a petition to the council if any violations of this ordinance are taking place by a licensee or permit. I don't know if Councilman Murato wants to add anything to that.
Actually, you said all I needed to say, so it's an important ordinance. It's one that I think it's long overdue. We don't have a licensing board as other communities. We are the licensing board, which I'm perfectly fine with that, but it just gives us more guidance as to how to proceed with these license violations.
Any further discussion from the council? With that being said, would either one of you like to form that into a motion?
I would move for first passage.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor, Councilwoman Souza, for first passage.
Second that.
Seconded by Councilman Murato. Roll call, vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Council President. Councilman Kahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Murato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
And Council President Brito.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
The next item is an ordinance in Amendment of Chapter 18 of the Revised Ordinances of the City of East Providence, Rhode Island, 1998, as amended in title vehicles and traffic. And this is sponsored by Councilwoman Souza.
So this ordinance and the subsequent ordinance that follows were something, ordinance that came up a few council meetings ago in discussion, one of which I believe was already on the docket, but due to my work schedule, I was unable to attend, so it got moved to this meeting. So this is, again, Jupiter, Jupiter Street, those, that neighborhood, Seventh Street, Ninth Street, Moran, those are all very narrow road streets with condensed housing. Vehicles being able to pass safely through the streets has become an issue. Safety vehicles such as a fire engine, buses, bus companies have reported some issues with being able to make turns from lateral streets onto juniper streets. Some of those streets currently have no parking on one side, either the whole street or a portion of the street to accommodate for safe vehicle passage. And this section of Juniper Street is one that is closest to Lion Avenue, comes about towards a stop sign, and is a limited time. So it's not necessarily no parking altogether. It's limited between a certain hour. So that way, in the heat, family members, residents, if they needed to park on street parking, they could, especially in the summertime where you may have a little bit more congestion. But during business hours, primarily with school buses and such, it would provide the needed space during commute, have passage safely down those roads. If there being no questions by the council, I would move passage.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor for moving passage by Councilwoman Souza. Would anyone like to second that motion?
I'd like to second, and I'd like to thank Councilwoman Souza for taking this on, both of these ordinances. That is a very tricky area. SC school is constantly under siege by traffic. Any one of us has gone to a football game on a Friday night knows what it looks like over there. So thank you for coming up with a good solution for that area. So I second.
Thank you.
We have a second by Councilman Kahoon. Roll call, vote, please.
Council President, public comment, public hearing.
A little public comment, yeah. Madam Clerk, anyone from the public?
No, Council President.
All right, let's proceed with a vote, so we can move this meeting along. Roll call, vote, please.
Councilman Kahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Murato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
And Council President Brito.
Aye, thank you. Next item, please.
The next item is an ordinance in Amendment of Chapter 18 of the Revised Ordinances of the City of East Providence, Rhode Island, 1998, as amended in title vehicles and traffic, sponsored by Councilwoman Souza.
Again, this is an extension of the previous ordinance. This ordinance, however, is a no, is no parking at all times. In this section is 70 feet from the corner where the stop sign is. So it's allowing, again, vehicles to be able to stop at the stop sign safely to be able to take a left or a right turn onto Lions Avenue. No questions, and if there's nothing from the public, I move first passage.
This is public hearing?
Yes.
Anyone from the public raise their hand? Madam Clerk?
I don't have anybody, Council President.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor for first passage? Anyone like to-
Second passage.
Second and final passage, Mr. President.
Oh, this is second, sorry. Second passage. Would anyone like to second that motion? Did I hear?
Second, final passage.
Seconded by Council, Councilman Rodrick. Roll call, vote, please.
And Council President, just for, if I may, just for the public to know, and my fellow council members, this is something, as always, I have spoken to all the neighbors in the neighborhood. They were all in agreement with it. They all understood the need and welcomed the need for having this signage put into place. So it was vetted by the neighbors in that community, and they were all on board with it. Thank you.
Roll call, vote, please.
Councilman Kahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Murato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
And Council President Brito.
Aye. Next item, please.
The next item is an ordinance in Amendment of Chapter 2 of the Revised Ordinances of the City of East-
The next item is an ordinance and amendment of chapter two of the revised ordinances of the city of East Providence, Rhode Island, nineteen ninety-eight as amended entitled administration. This is sponsored by Councilman Kahoon, Councilman Morado and Councilwoman Souza.
Council President, um, as you know, I had previously said, uh, this has to be tabled because the wrong ordinance was advertised.
So, uh, Mr. Solicitor, is the ordinance that I was sent with a, a docket, can you point out what, what, you know, what the difference is from, because I don't see anything different from what we discussed.
There was, after the first passage, there was a, a revision taken, taken out that remains in this ordinance, and that was the, uh, the issue on the budget being, uh, the department head budgets being subject to council approval.
Okay, so that's, and, and, and that's exactly where, why I didn't go for second passage last time. We're on this, we're on this docket. I, I don't have the right one I'm looking at.
That's exactly, that's why it needs to be tabled, because the wrong one was advertised, the link.
Oh, I see. So the, the advert, the advertised ordinance was with that same.
First one, the, exactly, the first one, yes.
Okay, uh, can we table this then for, it's going to be for second passage?
We table for second passage to the May meeting.
Okay. Well, if I can just add, and I'm not going to, so we had those discussions on resolutions and how, you know, we're tweaking stuff as we go along and learning. This is a prime example of one of those budget, uh, charter items that needed to be tweaked after the fact. So to my point with those resolutions that we're going to discuss on July seventh, this is a perfect example of how we need to fix things as we go along with the charter. So I'll just leave it at that.
So, uh, Councilman Morado, did I hear you say you had, um, you would like to make a motion to table this to the, uh, next council meeting?
Correct. Like to table that to the, uh, May nineteenth meeting.
Second.
Uh, so.
With advertising, sorry.
With advertisement, correct.
Okay, so we have a motion on the, we have a motion on the floor to, uh, table the current, um, ordinance, seconded by Councilwoman, by Councilman Morado, seconded by Councilwoman Souza. Uh, roll call vote, please.
Councilman Kahoon.
Before I vote, I just want to point out one thing about this ordinance. I know we've all read it, but just as a reminder, it calls for the, uh, appointment by the council, specifically by the council president of a member of the city council to serve on that, uh, financial review committee. Um, I forget exactly the wording that we use to describe that. Um, so if we're going to make second passage, given that we're not too far from budget season, uh, Mr. President and the council might want to put some thought into who that person is going to be on that committee. So maybe we can make that selection, um, at the same time, you know, presuming that it's going to pass next time. Uh, with that said, I vote aye to, to table it to the next meeting.
Thank you, Councilman Kahoon. Councilman Morado?
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodricks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza?
Aye.
And Council President Britto.
Aye. Next item, please.
The next item is to reconvene in executive session if necessary.
It is necessary, if I'm not mistaken.
Yep, Council President, yep. I make a motion to go, to convene into executive session.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Souza to reconvene to executive session. Would anyone like to second that motion?
Uh, I, I will second it with, um, the, uh, if you'll accept the amendment, Councilwoman, uh, Souza, that we are specifically discussing, stand by one second. We are discussing, um,
Claims?
Yeah, we're discussing claims.
And, and. We're at the Chavo Foundation also.
Inherited cover, yeah.
Sorry, you missed that one. Yep, yep.
And, and before we go into executive session, just so the public knows, we will, once we complete our executive session, we'll come back and announce the votes in executive session and open session and then adjourn.
Okay, so, uh, we going back to the original or the last number we? Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Wait, 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 can I confirm? Not, we're not going to use the line that we used for the first executive session. We're going to use the one that we planned for the executive session originally, because the last one was the mayor's invite.
Oh, no, you're right. We need, we need the mayors. We need the mayors.
So we're going.
Can I, I, I have a Zoom. Let me, let me send a, um, a thing.
Well, we have, we have. We, we have the first one that the city clerk gave us for executive session.
Yeah, can we just use that first one?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, perfect.
Are you ready to go with that?
Yeah, we have to vote on this. Did we take the vote?
No, not yet, not yet.
I made the motion.
Yep.
Councilman Kahoon seconded.
I mean, I thought you voted. I thought we voted. All right, roll call vote, please.
Councilman Kahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodricks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
And Council President Britto.
Aye, see you on the other side.
Thank you.
I think he's on you.
He might be.
Can you?
Yeah. Will we reconvene from executive session at this point in time? Next item, please.
The next item is adjournment.
Okay, would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
I have one question, one housekeeping. Doesn't Mike generally report out the votes from executive session?
Oh, he does. Is he jumping back in?
Don't know.
Hold on just a second. Let me see if he's, oh, hold on, he's here. He, we just have to promote him to panelist. He is in. Mike, you're in now. Sorry about that.
Uh, Mr. Solicitor, I was jumping a gun over here.
I felt like I was dead. You were talking about me and I couldn't, couldn't, couldn't get in. All right, Council President, uh, uh, report of claims at the, the council just concluded executive session, uh, which was a continuation of the uh, of the executive session that was at the beginning of the meeting on the claim of Paula, Paula Butterworth. The council approved the claim for the amount of four hundred and fifty dollars and by unanimous vote on the litigation of Genova Development, uh, in Heritage Harbor, uh, the council took action regarding proposed settlements of tho- both of those claims. However, the disclosure at this point, uh, would jeopardize for the litigation or settlement negotiations and therefore will not be released at this time. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Solicitor. Uh, with that being said, uh, we may proceed to the, uh, next item.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Oh, let's go with a roll call vote, please.
You're muted. Clerk, City Clerk? Thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, Councilman Kahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodricks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
And Council President Britto.
Aye.
Meet you all. Pleasure once again.
And happy Cinco de Mayo.
Good night.
See you then. Good night.
Good night.